Okay, I hereby call this City of May City Council meeting to order and ask for a rule.
Councilmember Ken Reed.
President.
Councilmember Alex McCrea.
Here.
President Jennifer Harrington.
Here.
Mayor Pat Stivers.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Hung Long.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. David Gwann.
Yeah.
Thank you. If we could all rise from the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Item number four is the approval of the agenda and based on discussion, we're going to move out of the consent agenda, item six B, we're going to move that to seven D. Is that correct? Any other changes to the agenda?
No other changes at this time.
Go ahead.
I would move we approve the agenda with the change to seven D.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the one change. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comments. I don't believe we have any, do we? However, we do have a young man from the scouts here. Hi. How are you? What's your name? I'm sorry? Kenton, how are you? Good? Good, okay. You're here to learn a little bit about government today? Well, welcome. Thank you for coming to Mays. Do you go to school here at the school district? There you go. Awesome. Good for you. Okay, well, thank you again for coming. No other comments, I assume? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda then. Item six.
I would move we approve the consent agenda with the change.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is Series 2025A note sale.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On June 2nd, 2025, the governing body authorized a temporary note sale of the 2025A temporary note. Bids for the notes were opened on July 1st. The city received six submissions with the lowest bid being 3.3 and the highest bid being 5.25. The lowest bid was from Piper and Sandals at 3.3. The results were more favorable than we anticipated. We thought we were going to have 3.8, so that's super exciting. On June 2nd, 2025, the council authorized the city management to select the lowest bid and execute the note sale, which did not exceed the authorized amount of 8 million or interest costs of 6.0. So we went ahead and did that. Larry is here tonight from Ranson's Financials. If you guys have any questions, and also Mitch is here, then go more and bell. If you guys have any questions, I'm sure they're more than willing to answer.
Questions from council?
No.
Pretty straightforward. So things were better than we thought?
Yes, so that's super exciting. So that's awesome.
Any comments from Larry or Mitch? No? Everything's cool? All right. Going to recommend anybody want to?
Against my better judgment, when I had the opportunity to say nothing, I'll come up here and say something. We just did this a little bit different because of the holiday, so as Elizabeth stated, the city manager was authorized to actually award the sale of the notes based on bid parameters which were met. So that's already been done. So the city today is just ratifying the action with the adoption of the note resolution. Other than that, everything is very similar to the city's previous note sales. But yeah, we had a good response to this way of sale. And it's good to know that the city has another alternative that it can use for timing and flexibility if it needs it for future sales. So this went really pretty well. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the bid for 2025A temporary note from Piper Sandler and Co. be ratified and resolution be adopted.
I've a motion and a second. Move that bid for 2025A temporary note from Piper Sandler Company be ratified and the resolution be adopted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Item B is the proposed 2026 city budget. Joe?
Hey, you get the B team now, and if I get in trouble, I'll bring the A team up here to replace me. Before I get started, I do want to take just a second to say we should recognize Sue for stepping in, taking care of the cemetery budget. I know that she has taken care of it in the past, but that wasn't her job this year. With the late departure of Lori Smothers at the unexpected, Sue had to step in about a week and a half ago and finish that up. So she put in a lot of extra work on top of her other duties, so I just wanted to recognize her publicly for that. Before I get started, in your packet, you have a budget book. And on page 32 of the budget book, there's a couple of charts on there. One of them is revenue by fund. There are two errors on that chart, so it's not going to line up with the budget pages or what I talk about. It will be correct when the budget book gets put on the website later on. But the Avalorum General Fund numbers will be 4,332,388 and debt service will be 790,831. That was something I caught this morning, and I apologize for that error. So with that, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the 2026 proposed budget and give you folks a few days to stew on it before we come back and ask for acceptance on the 21st. The city major budget estimates for 2026 show that we have a total starting resource of approximately $24,587, $24,587,109 in total resources available. And that'll include all cash carryover and all funds. So that's water, wastewater, et cetera. The budget establishes a total spending authority for 2026 of $19,306,478. Now, this is made possible while adjusting the overall mill levy from the current 43.014 to 42.858 mills. And we're going to talk about that a little more in depth as we move forward. So valuation estimates, the final valuation for 2024, as you know, came in, comes in in November because that's after all the hearings are heard from folks that are wanting to maybe have their taxes reviewed, et cetera. So we get an estimate in the spring, and then November, we get the final valuation. And that's what caused us to finish out with an overall 43.014 last year. This year, the estimate going into the year is 116,068,963. And we expect that to adjust sometime in November, and that's why I've highlighted that on the slide. So what that does for us is brings in about $4,332,388 in general fund and $790,831 in debt service. That's a little more than double what we put in debt service last year. So we had to adjust our percentages in our mill levies between Avalorum tax for the general fund and for debt service. And we'll talk a little bit about that more in a bit. But that chart up there on the right side is the chart that's on page 32 of your book. This one is correct because I was able to update the slide, but not the book that was online. Just as a reminder for folks that are watching and for you, that revenues consist of general fund income, city share of sales tax, permits and licenses, court revenue, franchise fees, and other miscellaneous revenues. What you will notice is absent on that revenue by fund this year is you do not see the CIP or the equipment reserve. Beginning with 2026, we will no longer report those as we go into the budget year. We will only report actuals because of the way we have now authorized those funds as a multi-year fund. So when the year finishes up, next year, when we do the budget pages, you'll see actual spent, not necessarily revenue, because it's all transfer money. For your reference, the Avalorum tax in the 2025 budget raised $3,913,352. And in the debt service, we raised $344,797. So you're seeing we're putting quite a bit more in debt service this year, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And then you also get some special highway funds through gas tax. We get police training funds. We get opioid settlement. We get the tourism and convention funds. And then utility fees. So those are some of the revenue sources that we get from the city. Some of the major changes in this year's budget, as you look through the budget book at your leisure and we'll talk about tonight. One of the big looming issues with administration is we have a projected 46% increase in medical premiums. That's a very large increase. It was unexpected. Last year, we got a 22% increase, and we thought that was big. And we were preparing for about a 10% to 12% increase this year, and this is what we told our premiums would be. Unfortunately, Tristan's been going out on the market trying to get other quotes. And right now, nobody else will quote us. So we're going to have to work through this over the next year. We're probably going to have to bite this one this year and swallow it. But you know, more worrisome than just for our budget, if you're an hourly employee in one of the two departments, police or Public Works, and you're making $20 an hour and you're paying a family premium right now, your share as a city employee is about $194.50 a paycheck, so about $400 a month. This is going to add about another $90 per paycheck or almost $200 more a month to the employee's share on top of the city's share. So yes, the budget's going to hurt the city budget, but it's going to hurt our hourly employees. So we're definitely going to have to look at some strategies next year to address this. But it's going to affect our budget this year.
Is there a reason why nobody will quote us right now?
It's just we're too late in the game.
The time of year?
Yeah, just we have to, we have to accept some type of insurance right now because we renew at the end of August. So we have to have a new insurance premium in September, and we just don't have a track record. We did fill out a, we had all our employees fill out an employee health survey, and we sent that out. And we just didn't have any take, we didn't have enough time to work with all the companies with everything else that's going on. Tristan's been very busy with some of the public activities as well. That's almost a full-time job. So it's just been a tough time for us to try to deal with this. It's not, it's not ever ideal that we're dealing with our health insurance and benefits quotes within two weeks of having to have a budget presentation put together. The ideal that we were seeing these at the annual, like at the calendar year, but it is what it is for us right now.
How many different plan options do we offer?
Four. I will mention on Wednesday, we are meeting with the county. We will see actually what came from us going out our health questionnaire. We don't have that back yet. We just got back some that was part of quota through other avenues. So on Wednesday, we may have a little bit better idea if there is any other options out there.
Unfortunately, we're budgeting for worst-case scenario. And if we do get better news somewhere along the line, that just means we'll potentially have some fallout funds that will be carried over.
Four options seems like a lot for whatever that's worth. So I don't know if there's any economy by reducing the number of options.
I have two.
That's it?
That's it.
Most companies have two or three.
Our biggest challenge is because we're a fairly small organization. We can't even get access to our claims and aggregate data, so they won't give us that because you have to be a certain size. You have to be consistently over 50 to get there. So because we don't have 50 insured, we're limited. So we can't, we can't plan and tailor our program after that because we can't get access to that information. So it's, that's one of our big challenges right now. And you know, over time, it's going to improve, but we need to find, we're trying to, some of the insurance providers we're looking at will hopefully be able to give us a little bit more information aggregate than what we can get from Blue Cross Blue Shield right now. So we're going to continue to look at that.
It is a concern for recruiting and retention, so we're definitely going to continue to look after this issue. One of the other things in administration this year is obviously the comprehensive, comprehensive plan update. We're kind of hoping to bring a contract to you next council meeting. And that actually goes along with strategic plan goal number four, which we just passed the strategic plan back in June. We expect the cost of that to be around $71,000 total. And that is going to be with a financial or physical analysis, land use analysis. Housing grant liabilities this year will be reduced, 2026 will be reduced by $190,000. So we'll be under $100,000 in net liabilities for that program in 2026. That doesn't necessarily mean we'll spend it because looking at some of the data now that I've got access to the spreadsheets, it looks like we get about a 60%, 65% actual return on people claiming that benefit that have applied for in the past. Debt service, current mill levies, 3.48 mills for 2025. And you can see in 2026, we had to up the debt service mill levy to 6.6. We are aware that next year is going to be another big climb. We're probably looking at another four mills plus going towards debt service with some of the other things that'll be coming online. So that'll be another big year for us. And you can see through 2031 right now with nothing changing, we're going to be around $5 million a year in total debt service, including specials and water debt, et cetera, through 2031. That purple line down there on the bottom in that bar graph is the one that we really have to pay attention to because we're going to be, starting in '27, we're going to be about $1.4 million a year just going towards debt service out of the general fund, and that's straight out of Avalorum taxes. Departmental changes, technology, which falls under strategic plan goal number seven. We're looking at, as we talked about back in March with the, or April with the the council workshop, talking about reallocation of the police detective position over to technology. This is net neutral. This is why we can afford to do it because we couldn't afford to hire another full-time position out of the general fund. Chief had indicated that he would like to see some of his technology needs get pushed to the forefront. And one of the ways to do that is help support technology getting more resources. And then year two, the ERP software migration is going to cost us another $30,000 in 2026. And with that, that's going to get us the financials, which will then be able to get us updated chart of accounts. We'll reset our chart of accounts. We can start tracking expenditures by program versus by department. Utility billing changes, we'll be able to do better, better work inside the utility billing software, court permitting and licensing. Police will replace two of their high-mileage vehicles. You may notice that they've got one vehicle stripped out out there in the parking lot. They've got two vehicles that have become fairly maintenance-intensive that they need to replace. And it is a good year for that. Overall, in the equipment reserve line, we're actually going to be spending less money in equipment reserve in 2026 overall than we did in 2025 and still be able to support the police with two new vehicles. Public Works, we are looking at a new maintenance worker two position. The note on this one is public works positions are funded from three different pots of money. So it's only costing us about $27,000 out of the general fund to fund that new maintenance worker two. The other two-thirds of that employee are paid by water and wastewater. And then we would buy a new vehicle for Public Works, a new 3/12 pickup to help support the needs of the department. And projects and parks, we're looking at the Irma Street replacement design. The funding for that would actually come out of the street maintenance budget, what would have normally been allocated in '26 just for straight street maintenance. Public Works Director Vestring would like to see $103,000 that diverted the Irma Street design. That allows him the opportunity to have, quote, "a shovel-ready project." So when we have KDOC matching grants, et cetera, we have a better chance of getting that street paid for. Hampton Lakes to Copper Creek apartment sidewalk, which will help with connectivity from the Hampton Lakes neighborhood over to the schools, is estimated to cost $125,000. And then the upgrade of the pedestrian walkways at 45th and Mays Road to make them ADA compliant would be another $75,000. Community spaces, under strategic plan goal one, we would look to install an ADA accessible playground area in the Mays City Park. Estimated cost for that's about $200,000. And that would include pathways to connect it to the other park areas. And continued funding for community events, the important note with this community events funding is we're going to use the funds directly out of the convention and tourism account, that money that we get in from people staying in the hotels, et cetera. So we get a pretty good funding stream there now. Doesn't mean we're going to spend $150,000, but we're going to give the budget authority of $150,000 in case something were to come up big next year that we would need that funding. But Tristan does a really good job of budgeting it effectively, so we don't really expect to use that much. But we don't want to have to come back for a budget adjustment on that one. Recommended 2026 budget authority, you'll see that the 2025 final mill levy is 43.014. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at 2026 and bringing that down slightly to 42.858. I talked earlier about last year, we had 3.48 going to debt service, and this year, 6.6 going to debt service. So the difference to the general fund this year with the work that the staff have done across the departments and the recommendations and the critical thinking that's gone on with the folks behind me, is the difference in the general fund mill levy is down 3.276 mills from last year. That money is actually now being diverted to debt service because we're going to that service fund. So we are doing, we are doing a good job of trying to control cost in the general fund. We just have to deal with the debt service for the next couple of years. So I thought you'd find that an interesting point, that yeah, 3.276 mills less going to the general fund in 2026 over 2025. And so the important dates this year for the budget are July 20th is the last day to notify Cedric County of the revenue neutral rate, need for a revenue neutral rate hearing. July 21st, we'll come back and we'll ask for acceptance of the proposed budget. Obviously, I'll stand for questions tonight, and we are available for questions this week if you have any as you continue to look through these. September 8th, we'll have the revenue neutral rate hearing and budget hearing. And then October 1st, the certified budget must be in the hands of the Cedric County Court. With that, we'll stand for questions.
Revenue neutral rate is 35?
The revenue neutral rate, if we were to keep all the same for 2026, the revenue neutral rate would drop to 35.621 mills from 43.014.
So basically, we capture all the assessed value across 17% increase?
We're capturing most of it towards debt service, yes.
So, yeah, because this is a kind of huge. Even lower than the last year's new levy. I still didn't get why, what you mean, yeah, the debt service kind of doubled, kind of three mill. But that, assuming last year we were 43?
Correct. General fund, this year, the general fund mill levy would be for 2026 proposed would be 36.258. So you take the debt service away, and we would need 36.258 mills to do everything that we need to do. And revenue neutral would be 35.6. So even without debt service, if we wanted to do the things we want to do, maintain the employee benefits and take care of the operations as you see fit, we would still have to exceed revenue neutral even without debt service.
Yeah, exceeding revenue neutral rate is one thing, but continuing with the previous year's new levy rate is another thing. Because that's kind of, so basically, what I'm seeing that is the assessed value grows 17%. We capture all so that we can do whatever we want to do. That the true statement?
I don't know if you're, I don't understand what you're saying. You're saying we're capturing all that valuation to do what we want to do. A lot of that valuation is being captured and transferred over to debt service this year. Almost $400,000 of that, that new valuation is going directly to debt service for general obligation debt that we owe on. Don't forget that we also pay directly out of the general fund, not through the debt service fund, the public building commission debt. And the public building commission debt is a ballooning payment every year. So next year in 2026, this building costs us about $30,000 more than it does this year. So every year, even though that doesn't show up in the debt service line, public building commission debt does get paid out of the general fund debts or out of the general fund mill levy. And then employee benefits.
Talking about new construction, if that 17% growth, what is the proportion from the new construction? What is from the existing?
Yeah, I think.
10%? You mean? Okay, so the existing one is just 7%?
Yeah, I think you're right.
And we kind of, in the projection, I know we, I mean, we are talking about next year, we may have some concern from state legislature, the cap, those type of thing. And also new construction, can we still expect that kind of growth 10% or no?
Actually, we, I think we do next year just based upon the last two years' building permits. If you look at 2024 building permits, it far exceeded 2023. And 2024 should be, a lot of that should be coming on in '26. It won't necessarily come on in '25 because if it was the latter half of '24 and it was issued, it was still under construction in early '25. It takes anywhere from six to nine months to build out a house. And so it has to be on the tax rolls for a full year for it to get assessed at full value as a structure. So we'll see a lot of the late '23 even and 2024 building permits coming on in 2026.
Do we know our assessed value accrues compared to other jurisdictions? What is our situation?
Well, I don't have factual data, but we are issuing the largest number of building permits in the metro area. We exceed Goddard, who is number two, and far exceed My Own City Valley Center. But where, when you look at the heat maps that the real estate folks put out, Mays is one, Goddard is two.
I know County is talking about whether they will, how much they capture, the 5% or 4%. I'm not surprised we have 7%.
And you do bring, you do bring up a good point. I mean, if we're standing here at this time next year and the state caps our valuation at 4%, we're not talking about anything new. We're talking about austerity measures to pay that debt service. And we are all aware of that. We've had that conversation internally a number of times. If they, if they cap us at 4% even with growth, we're in trouble.
I have a little bit hard time understanding why we cannot have such a big increase. But when we still, when we talk about the pay increase for the employees, we still have the difficulty to meet that. Why would that happen? Remember when you, when we do the budget workshop, we do talk about the pay increase, we can we kind of thinking that, cannot forget, I, I forget the exact number, are we talking?
So what we, so what you, yeah, what we talked about.
Saying that scale back.
What we talked about.
Now, you know, this growth is seventeen percent, but why can't we do that?
So what we talked about in the budget workshop is we were talking about three and a half percent, I think three or three and a half percent COLA, and you guys said, mm-mm, at the budget workshop. And so.
That being in addition to the merit.
Right. So what is in the budget line is the two and a half percent merit increase for employees that would receive a merit increase, which by and large is most. Most of them have not hit the top of their pay scale. So you get a two and a half percent increase at some point during the year, right? So not everybody gets their merit increase at the same time. It's based upon their appraisal period. And then we have put in two percent in the budget for salary increases, whether that's COLAs or whether we have to negotiate a salary for an employee, if we have a salaried employee that leaves. And to recruit against a salaried position, we have to bring somebody in at a different rate to get the right person, but we have to have a little bit of cushion in there for that. But we did not leave the three, three and a half percent in there because you guys told us no at the budget workshop.
So that's exactly the puzzling part, because it seems that even this number, I feel that it should be okay, we say yes to the proposed number, but why we cannot do that?
If you look at, if you look at twenty-twenty, I wrote it down on my notes somewhere here today, if you look at twenty-twenty-five general fund, we estimated we bring in about three point nine-one-five million. And then this year, we're going to bring in about four point three million. So it's about, to the general fund, so about four hundred thousand dollars more. Some of that would be eaten up in, because this city budgets by name on the salary. It doesn't budget like Wichita does, where they say the average police officer's salary is X, and we just give the city fifty police officers' time mid-range pay and put it in there. Tristan literally goes through and budgets down to the employee and the amount they will make. So we're not putting extra in there, or we're putting in there what we know we're going to pay that person. And so we have to really watch that, because if somebody leaves and we bring somebody else in, even an hourly employee, and we have to pay them a little more to bring them in, we are now exceeding what we expected to spend in the budget. But benefits are more expensive. We've put some more money in the council this year for some things that the council wanted to do. The comprehensive plan is going to be in there for the budget. So there's a number of small increments of things throughout the budget that are bringing in that total four hundred thousand dollars difference, if that makes sense. It's not one particular thing, it's raising, raising the need for that four hundred thousand dollars. There's some inflationary pressures in some different areas. There's some things we want to do related to the strategic plan, like the comprehensive plan and the new land use plan. There's a number of things we need to do that are ten thousand here, or five thousand there, or whatever, throughout the budget lines in the department, and more than happy to walk through it with you in the office someday this week, either I or Elizabeth can do that. But that four hundred thousand dollars is eaten up across the departments in necessary increases to make sure that you maintain operations. It's not four hundred thousand to salaries or four hundred thousand to benefits or whatever. It's four hundred thousand peanut butter spread throughout the budget so that different things can happen.
Also, what is the, what is the distribution of that one percent sales tax from the county? What is the growth this year? Because if we're thinking about next year, whether we will have the sales tax or not, we, it's better to know this year from the countywide that one percent, what is the growth there, and then help us to understand better if we get lucky, get that.
Yeah, so we do not, we budget the following year based upon the previous year's actuals when it comes to sales tax revenue. So the county sends us.
Already conservative on that.
Yeah, so they'll say, we budget conservative on revenue everywhere we can, because you can't guarantee it. You can't, but you can't guarantee anything but conservative in interest. You can't guarantee, you can't budget anywhere conservative on sales tax revenue. If it comes in better than that, that's where you get cash carryover for your reserves. But we, we definitely will budget our revenue projections for twenty-twenty-six based on twenty-twenty-five, or twenty-twenty-four actuals is what we do, because we don't have twenty-twenty-five actuals. We budget on twenty-twenty-four actuals, and until we start seeing more businesses in town that are, that are taking in sales tax, our share of the countywide sales tax is not going to grow much. But we also feel that, you know, that if we get that one cent sales tax, that's going to take some pressure off some other areas, certainly.
I read news, I think Lawrence is talking about their sales tax increase is lower than expected.
Our, our numbers for twenty-twenty-five thus far have been pretty decent on our sales tax revenues, but it's, it's not earth-shatteringly more than twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, I'll not take up too much time, maybe in a week we can go through some numbers.
You don't have to answer it right now, but a question I'm curious about, if you were having to line item a budget number on the amount of money it takes to do the budget, what would that number be?
The amount of personnel hours?
Yeah. So come back to me with a ballpark on that.
Well.
You don't have to, right now.
I don't know how you put a, a, a financial figure against all the.
It's a lot.
All the cussing and discussing that goes on between the people that are in this room, because we start meeting in January with the departments.
Yeah.
There's a lot of hours going to just, just planning this thing out. And then the last week, you've got a madman that runs up and down the hall and says, I need answers now. I don't know who that is. Like I said, I, Elizabeth and I are both available for questions at any point between now and the twenty-first. More than happy to sit down and meet with you at some point if we can get together. Look forward to the conversation.
Joe, one last thing. One of, one of the things that I heard from one of the constituents that asked me to give him a call, it was actually not necessarily budget-related, it kind of all ties together, but he was asking me about the sales tax proposal. And one of the questions that he asked was, have, have we explored all options other than a sales tax? And I'm curious what options we might have that are not a sales tax.
Well, we could hope WAMPO shows some love to Maze, but even if WAMPO shows some love to Maze, we still have to pay twenty percent of that. And that twenty percent comes out of our current revenue sources, which primarily have Valorem tax and our share of the city, the countywide sales tax. So it really, WAMPO doesn't necessarily solve our problem, because our two million dollars or whatever share that we'd have to pay of a particular road project, we're going to have to bond in debt, and that's just going to add to our woes on the other side of this, this equation. Our debt service is going to go up until we start getting some things paid off.
State statutes really limits what we can do as far as different sources. There's really property tax, sales tax, and user fees. Those are our only options we really have. We can't, and, and, you know, grant funds, as Joe has mentioned, you know, if we could take advantage of those, we're frequently putting in for grant opportunities. And unfortunately, we've been turned down for more than I would have, would like to admit that we've been turned down even in the short year, in eight months that I've been here. So a lot of that has to do with where our, our income levels are as a community. So we're going to continue to put in for those, and if we can leverage those, great, but we are very, very limited by state statutes how we can raise those funds.
I, I did meet with PEC today. We were talking about road projects, and PEC is willing to come to the table and help us with our package for WAMPO next time around. They have quite a bit of experience getting things through WAMPO, so they'd like to see what we submitted last time for one nineteenth and help us break that up and write it better. Not saying it was written bad, but they think they've got some tricks that can help elevate that project, so.
Be amazing.
We'll work on some of that kind of stuff, too. All I need tonight is a receive and file, and we'll bring it back in two more weeks for some more discussion.
I would move that we receive and file the proposed twenty-twenty-six City of Maze budget.
A motion in second to receive a file that proposed twenty-twenty-six City of Maze budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, item C, Stone Ridge.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
I, I appreciated within that budget book that you put together, that it had a tie into kind of the strategic plan. It was nice to see that.
Yeah, we want to continue to.
We want to continue to improve upon that. In fact, we're starting to work on the priority pieces that you're going to start to see specific goals, specific things that we're going to do to address that. We hope that at some point, we connect our quarterly reports to that, too, so you kind of see where we're going from where we're, where our focus on some of the things we're doing day to day, tie in with that as well. So I think it's really important. We've spent a lot of money to do a strategic plan, we've spent a lot of time to do it, we should be utilizing it, we should be, the decision-making that we do today should be towards those initiatives and those goals that we've set in the strategic plan. And I do want to, just before you move on to the next item, I do want to thank Joe because he did put an awful lot of time into doing this, but it's also Tristan and Elizabeth and, and all of the department heads for putting that time in to do this. But I think it's a good product. I think they've really, I think it's, you've seen a lot of improvement here since, since I started, even in the last year and a half since I've been here. I think it's a, it's a better, better document, and I think it's only going to continue to see improvements as we were able to tie it in with everything else that we've done here as well.
Yeah, moving on to item C is Stone Ridge Estates paving improvements.
Yes, I'll present that. Back at the June twenty-first City Council meeting, you approved the petition and the visibility resolution to move forward with paving improvements for the Hidden Acres Drive, which basically is going to take that from a gravel drive to an asphalt. At this point, we have worked with Garver Engineering, who's our on-call engineering service, and we've, they've given us a price, estimated cost of a amount not to exceed forty-two thousand six hundred for all services. That includes design and construction observation services. That's been reviewed by the city attorney, and at this point, we make the recommend, we'd like to make the recommendation that we go work with Garver LLC to go ahead and do that engineering agreement and allows us to start moving forward with this. In preparation of, of doing this, they've already floated us some different options that might be available as far as paving, and we're looking at some of those right now. We'll probably be reaching out to the neighborhood just to see where their thoughts are on, on it. It's a giant cul-de-sac down there, and we've talked about some cost-saving options as a possibility, or whether we're best to keep the current paved area as it is. So Garver's already done, put a lot of work into this in anticipation of approving this, this engineering agreement that's before you today. Stand for any questions you got.
Can you remind me of what kind of street they want, like curb and gutter?
It's going to be a, no, it's actually going to be about as simple as it can be. We're just paving the surface. We're doing five inches of adder creek and five inches of asphalt. So it's, it's about as, it's about as low cost as you can make a street. You're not doing curb and gutter, they'll have their existing ditches, they're okay with that. Their goal was to get a, a street at a good value without adding a lot of additional costs, and so that was very important for that group from the very start when they approached the city about it.
It's not a high-traffic street. No.
I entertain a motion to approve or not approve, yes?
I would move that we approve the engineering and construction observation agreement with Garver LLC for the pavement improvements to the Stone Ridge Estates for the amount not to exceed forty-six thousand six, I'm sorry, forty-two thousand six hundred dollars.
I got a motion in a second to approve the engineering and construction observation agreement with Garver LLC for pavement improvement to Stone Ridge Estates for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand six hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, let's move back to new item, which is seven D, which was in the consent agenda, which was six B. So this is an ordinance for the code for the city to regulate recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, et cetera. Who wants to speak to that?
I can speak to it. As you remember, a while back, it's now been probably, what, seven, eight months since we originally started talking about this? This had to go to the plan, we talked about this change to this ordinance, you know, as, as you remember, our codes basically just limit recreational vehicles, boats and trailers all during the entire year. There was an administrative memo that basically allowed it during the summer months, basically from April first to end of September. And when we reached, when I identified this as something we really needed to be consistent with and make sure we had codes and rules that reflect this, council weighed in on this, it went back to the planning commission, the planning commission wanted more information, we brought it back to them, and what you have today is what's been approved by the planning commission. I don't think there's a significant amount of changes from what, what the council indicated that they'd like to see. But one of the questions that came to me, and it's one of the reasons we pulled it off the consent agenda, is there was a thought, you know, what is going to be the grace period we're going to allow for this? And as we kind of thought about the timing of where this is, our recommendation would be, you got two different, sure they have two different versions of that on there that they can? So one version shows it take in effect immediately, the other one has it take effect on October first. It makes a lot of sense to me that we would implement this when our normal period in the past where it would have ended, and, and between now and October first, if we wait to go ahead and implement it effective October first, between now and then, we can spend some time notifying folks that it'll be changing in October and that the, the rules that you're implementing as part of this change.
At least the ones we see that are already violating it.
And what I, what we do is we'd spend the next three to four months just informing people, letting people know that there'll be a change and how that's going to be, will allow them to continue to do it based upon the administrative exemption that we'd had in the past between now and October first. And we just spend the next three to four months kind of educating people and letting people know where the thought process was from what was originally brought forth. I think it's, there's some prudence, and, and I think there needs to be some opportunity to let people to know that it'll be different starting really effective October first, but really, in a lot of ways, starting April of next year, when it would have reverted back to the old way of how the administrative exemption applied to this. I'm sure Chief would be willing to speak to some of that. This is under.
Right.
Code enforcement side of things, but that's one of the reasons we decided to go ahead and pull it off the consent agenda.
Can you go with that, Chief? All good? Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, did somebody else want it?
No.
Okay.
I was trying to pass it off, but he might have to do it.
I just said I was good with that.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I would move to pass this ordinance effective October first, twenty-twenty-five, and authorize you to sign it on behalf of the City of Maze.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second to pass the ordinance and authorize the mayor to sign it effective. it will become effective October 1st, 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I think we're not doing executive, are we?
Executive session.
We are one, one motion away from being adjourned.
I'll move.
Hold on. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I don't have a second yet.
I'll second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. All right, see you in two weeks, guys. We're done.